The wall says 6:30. So I'm gonna open the March 12th meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. First agenda is the meeting minutes from February 27th. Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th. I have a question, have we gotten all the signatures needed for the courthouse?
Yeah, Britton just signed tonight, so I think Tamika has everything she needs.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, my feeling for getting that.
I would've, but I think, I was remote, so can I second?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I didn't know what the new, alright, very good.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question on page two. Approval of the master plan is current on hold following a meeting that John and Austin administration had as executive director at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They advised that the plan cannot be adopted until the open space and work plan is completed because it needs to be incorporated into the goals and objectives. The goals, the open space committee is currently working on. And, um, yes, the plan cannot be adopted until the planning board signs off on it.
Yes.
And, um...
So like I say, instead of master plan 2023, it's master plan 2024. Hopefully, it won't be 2025.
Right, and it seems to me there was some other agenda I saw where it said it already been approved, and I can't remember, it wasn't anything to do with the planning board.
This is something else, this is, this is another thing that was reading. So...
Okay, anything further? Negative. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we next. Finally. I can only squeeze that guy's head so bad. He finally signed it. I've gotten a covenant duly signed by all of the other participants, I guess you'd have to say. And it sounds like this has been reviewed by more attorneys than Morgan, than Morgan has.
Yes, yes. Something else, I mean, I've never had a bank sign off on a covenant before, but George tells me that that is absolutely statute, so it was the right thing to do, it's just that, you know, he didn't like it too much, my banker.
That was the first, I never knew that either.
Yeah, me either.
Until town council said that's actually part of Mass General Law, so going forward, this is gonna be common practice that whenever we sign a covenant, the bank's gonna have to acknowledge it.
I don't know how many covenants we have had, but that has not been done.
Not, I mean, every subdivision that I've ever done in town, I've never had the bank sign the covenant.
Yeah.
Does anybody need to do another review of this?
As long as everything...
Yeah, no, it's been thoroughly reviewed by town council and police council, it's gone back and forth for, it went back and forth for weeks, so...
So the town was taken off as being trustee?
No, 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 that's the homeowner's documents, this is the covenant.
Oh, the covenant, excuse me.
Yes, 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 this is the covenant.
I gotcha.
The homeowner's documents still be, still being reviewed by town council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, I'll accept the motion to sign the covenant.
And also move that. Second.
Any discussion on that one? No discussion?
Nope.
I'm just happy he's signing it.
Any or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who gets this?
Well, we keep, we, we take it back, and I'm gonna have to look into who gets copies. We at least have to keep a copy, I think we have to submit, we have to submit something with the town clerk. I think, I think Clea gets the original and we keep copies.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry, Clea's already been 21 days up on this.
No, 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 but they get a copy of that for the file.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I will take that back and we'll make sure that copies are given to the right departments, and then I'll get it back to Clea. And it has to be notarized by Tamika.
Just so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Why don't you give it to Tamika so she can notarize it?
Okay. Next, let's see, we have... Oh, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait a minute.
Right there.
We're on the same page.
Maybe.
We now have in front of us a set of plans for Hilltop Estates, which I believe we can sign.
Yes, that has also been reviewed by, Quinn Engineering was involved with that. They, you know, wanted to make sure that everything was kosher with the plans, and they've taken a look at it to make sure any amendments that were required as approved by the planning board were incorporated, and they were.
Okay, but there is nothing on there that we're asking town council?
No, no, town, town council...
No notes anyplace on that.
No, no, that was Quinn Engineering that verified that, town council doesn't review that.
Question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Planner. I wasn't a, I wasn't part of any of the hearings on that, the approval process?
Right, so you can't endorse these?
I can't endorse, correct?
Just the, just the three members that were.
Is that, that's a, is that?
Oh, yeah, all you need is a majority of the board.
Got it, okay.
So I'm sitting, taking a separate motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse said plans.
Second that, for Hilltop Estates.
All in favor?
Aye.
Upside down.
Wait a minute, there's only one plan?
It's recorded, yep, yes.
You remember how many plans we had to sign?
Well, it's not 112 lots like Bryce Estates.
I remember that, like 20 pages.
Yes.
It got recorded.
So this is one Mylar with copies, so if the board could sign the copies as well, that would be appreciated, so we can have a copy, and we can give a copy to the town clerk.
Today's the 12th, March 12th. After George records it, I'll have it, I'll download it and send it up to you.
Thank you. How many copies are there, Norm?
Two.
That's great, that's perfect. And I've got extra Sharpies.
We don't, anybody got a sticker?
Yeah, no, I won't roll it yet.
Yeah, oh, Tamika has a sticker. So is the Mylar signed, gentlemen?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, what's that doing there?
Hey, Norm, can I have the rubber band, please, I'll give this to Clea.
Thank you.
I think I put this in a 22. Okay. Next, we have...
Norm?
Yep.
There's a form F somewhere. Conditions of approval? I, I know you want those recorded.
I don't have it with me, but can you stop by tomorrow?
They have to sign it.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't bring it with me.
So, does it have to be signed in presence of the board in public meeting, or can they drop by the office, or?
Yeah, no, they can drop by the office.
Okay, yeah, so let's, let's have that done.
As long as Tamika's there, she's just has to, she'll probably have to notarize it, I think.
Okay.
You just have to notarize, Norm, the chairman.
Yeah, so you know what, gentlemen, so that, knowing the form F has to be signed, you three gentlemen, just, um, if you can stop by town hall at some point tomorrow and sign that, I'll have it ready. My apologies, I didn't realize I had to bring that, so, um...
No worries, just give me a call when it's ready.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll try and get that done tomorrow, if you can stop by.
Yeah, it's fine, any, anytime, it's sweet, next, you know.
Yep, thanks, Clea.
Thank you very much, did anything you wanna know on Bryce Estates or Brittonell before I split, or are you good?
Kinda curious.
Yeah, we're good, but we're good. Okay? Norm was curious about something.
About Brittonell, I see that you are putting in some gravel going in on phase two.
Yep, quail runs being built right now.
Assuming utilities are going in soon.
Yeah, starting, supposed to start Friday, on, on the, um, you know, water sewers. We already built a detention pond. That big detention pond that goes on the left, the right-hand side of the quail run.
Yeah. And while he's building it, you are gonna start the trail?
The trail that goes off to the side of it, yep, that's part of it, so...
Thank you.
And, after, what about Hilltop?
Hilltop, well, as soon as I get all this recorded, and the bank's doing appraisal, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this road in, hopefully, next couple of months, I'm ready to go.
Yeah, I saw you had the chipper up there.
Yeah, well, he's, he's grinding the stumps.
The stumps, yeah.
That's a process, you ever watch him do that, you don't wanna go fall in that thing. Wow. It grinds rocks and everything.
Yeah.
Machine, yeah.
And by the time he probably gets done with that one project, he has to change the bearings and the teeth and the whole thing.
Well, and on Bryce Estates, we do have, the crossings all been designed, I'm getting it from Contech, and I got the appraisal back, so I, I hope to be starting that in the next couple of months to connect that road through, I know that's been, Seth hits me up every time he sees me, so, I, I know you guys are interested in that, so I'm, I'm gonna have that going, just as quick as I can.
That'd be good.
Okay.
And just about every lot that I have in Rutland that has road in front of it is sold. It's crazy sales.
On Brittonell Drive.
Really? Huh? Those two, someone looked at one of them the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, I have two there.
Delightful.
Thank you, Clea, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a special permission decision for an estate lot of 23 miles road to sign. I'm pretty sure you all have that in your packets.
Yeah, so this one's pretty straightforward. Yeah, no, no unique conditions of approval for this project, gentlemen?
Oh, just one?
Yes.
Particular thing, on the signature page at the very bottom?
Yep.
It says in accordance with Master Law, blah, blah, blah. Special permit shall last two years from the granting. I think that has been changed, I think it's now three. Ninety percent sure.
Is that the COVID law thing, where you guys said it extended or something?
I don't think it's anything to do with COVID, I think they just changed it.
Well, that means I would have to amend the signature page and it couldn't be signed tonight, so, um, I, I haven't heard, that's the first I've heard about that. I, I haven't heard that it's been extended three years.
Maybe my memory is totally wrong, but I do think...
I can recommend maybe you sign tonight, do a little research, and then if something changes, do, sign it the next time.
Yeah, if you'd be willing to endorse it tonight, and then I can look into it, and if we need to go back and change it, we can, we can go back and change it.
Currently says two years, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's been standard for as long as I can remember.
It has been, yeah, forever, but...
My understanding is two years, but I'm not gonna...
I, I know that in recent years, they've been talking about doing, you know, zoning reform, and maybe that was one of the proposals, I don't think anything's been approved, one of the things they were gonna do was, Massachusetts is the only state in the country that still has A&R plans, they were looking to eliminate that and consider anything like that a minor subdivision, I know they were talking about reducing the, the percentage of votes you need at town meeting for zoning by law amendments to a simple majority instead of two-thirds, but I don't think anything ever formally got passed, I think, I never, I don't think it ever got through.
I know conservation commissions are three years generally, at this level.
Variance is one, is one year, the good old one year.
If you seek a variance from the bylaw.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so let's do that, let's endorse tonight, and I'll check into that, Norm, tomorrow, and see if, see if that happens.
Maybe my memory is just totally wrong, but...
Okay, so you have a blank sheet, okay, awesome.
So we have a motion to endorse the special permit.
Motion, oh, go ahead. Request, um, motion to endorse special permit for 23 miles road, um, as presented.
Any discussion? Any or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, Britton, you were involved in this, right?
Yes, sir.
Why, that's in my head. The special permits now are valid for three years instead of two.
I thought it was two.
It has been two forever.
When did that change?
Good question.
I know, something that I heard somewhere, not all that long ago.
Are you sure, 'cause that's right in Mass General Law.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You could actually have to change the law.
Yeah, and like I said, there's been proposals over the years to reform zoning and include, oh, they were gonna include language on site plan reviews too, because currently Master Law doesn't have anything, but again, I think it kind of, it just pittered out and...
Did it officially change, sir?
What's that?
Did it officially change?
Yeah, sorry.
It could, but it didn't. It could, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I haven't heard that it has.
'Cause everyone mixes it up with border conditions.
Because I've, I've, because I'm a member of the planners' list servant, and something would've changed, I would've definitely heard about it.
Yeah, I'm ninety percent sure it's still two years.
Thank you.
Okay.
Three years would be nice, make it a little easier.
Okay, next, item four, we have a request, I guess, for a minor home occupation. We have a letter from the applicant, it's, okay.
And thank goodness, it wasn't the, it was not the house that I bought.
I went by there too, I know, it wasn't the property that you were thinking about.
Yeah.
I thought about that as I drove by. Now again, gentlemen, the bylaws don't require a vote of the planning board for this, however, we do have them come before the board with a summary stating how they're gonna stay within the restrictions of the, of the bylaws, so it doesn't require a vote of the board, it just require, just the acknowledgement of the board that they received it and that you're okay with the circumstances.
Well, one thing is for certain, nothing can be put behind the house because of the wetlands.
Of course.
So, you know...
Yes, very well.
Now, Mr. De Silva's aware, in the conversations I've had with him, that if something changes and the, the business expands in certain ways to trigger any of the thresholds for a major home occupation, he needs to come before the board for a special permit, and that would be a public hearing.
So to clarify, I know, I understand in the letter, he's stating he has 10 parking spaces, however, only two vehicles will occupy the personal driveway space, is a dri, is a personal driveway space, is, are you considering that the entire driveway? 'Cause I know you have sort of two entries.
Correct.
And then you have the back garage area. Is all of that considered private?
Just the paved is ours, my grandmother lives on the other side, is our tenant, so we occupy that driveway as well.
Okay. So, so there would be more than, so for your paved area, there'd be more than two, if you had vehicles that were gonna be staged there overnight?
Correct, two vehicles for business purposes only by the basketball hoop, which is about 100 feet away from the road, my mother parks in the garage.
In the back?
No, on, right on the left, I did bring a picture of it from...
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a visual.
No, of course.
Yeah, okay, so, on this area, I don't know if you can see that, this area right here?
Yes.
So you would use this for two?
Yes.
Personal or business vehicles?
Uh, business vehicles. And then my mother parks in the garage.
On the other side?
My grandmother parks on the right side.
Okay.
And then when I'm there, I, I park in the middle, I usually leave about seven in the morning, get home about 8:00 PM.
Okay.
Depending on work requirements, obviously.
Is business use, in terms of what Britton's saying, is that the same as, I know he says he's not gonna be leaving cars for sale, or?
No.
Yeah, not, not that...
No, nothing, nothing's gonna be sold to off the, from the property, from what I understand.
Correct.
Yeah.
And whatever, the, the maximum of two cars is, they're both gonna be legally registered?
Yes.
And so it won't trigger any, any violation in terms of, in terms of that?
Okay. As far as these vehicles that are be, coming from Framingham, 'cause I know the auction yard is really well.
Of course.
Are these gonna be fixer-uppers, are you, you're gonna be fixing them up in the driveway?
No, so there's two separate requests, one's for auto wholesale?
Okay.
Which allows for vehicles to be purchased at the Framingham Auction.
I see that, yep.
Will be transported on a trailer to my friend's warehouse in Ashland, he'll fix them there, transport them back to the Framingham Auctions, they'll never touch the Rutland property. The second request is for a retail license, that would be the two vehicles sitting in the driveway.
Okay.
They wouldn't be fixed there, they would just be for storage purposes only.
Okay. And people coming in to see the vehicles, driving in, parking, things like that?
So that was actually a question I had, I don't believe in a minor home occupation that's allowed, so I can show them at my friend's dealership in Ashland, it's called New Beginnings Auto.
Okay.
So it'd be totally off-site, however, if there would be a concession that one client may be allowed on the property during regular business hours, I would also be able to do that as well. Obviously, board's discretion.
I would think that's a slippery slope in a, in a, in a position like that, I defer to other members of the board on that, but, um, I mean, if they're being stored there for the purpose of a sale, but people aren't actively engaged, what, what I would, in my personal opinion, what I wouldn't wanna see is it turn into, you know, a bunch of people stopping in, looking at cars, as, as a neighbor, I would be, whoa, hang on, I don't want a car dealership next to my house.
Yeah, I don't wanna open a Ford dealership.
Right, that's been an issue with certain businesses here since I've been here, so wanna be very sensitive to that.
Yeah.
Of course.
My only other question is signage, I know you quote that as, um, uh, being allowed, I would defer to the board?
Two square feet.
Two square foot sign.
Yeah, I believe the minor home occupation gives you a certain amount, uh, I would not need that in any way, shape, or form due to it being mainly an online business, however, as I believe John said, in the event that it grows, I understand what it requires and what is allowed to be.
Yeah, I, I believe, Norm, the two-by-two is allowed for minor home occupation, correct? So, yeah, you could do a two-by-two under your current approval.
Okay, it's similar to the solar signs people put in their yard, I would assume, or landscaping signs, is that, that's the size, I would say.
Yes, yeah.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's two-by-two, it's two square feet.
So it's, so it's two by one, one by two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or some variation thereof.
Those are my questions, I mean, as long as, as long as it's within our requirements.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
The, the big problem we have right here is, we don't have an approval process.
Yeah, exactly.
So I mean, Ty's been great, being very transparent and coming in and seeking the right types of approvals, so, um, but yeah, Norm and I have talked about that, I talked about that with you this morning, Dick, about, I think that's one thing the bylaws subcommittee should, should start looking at, is at least have a process where, as we spoke about this morning, Dick, you know, maybe it's something where they come before the board, and, you know, it's an approval by the board, and then the board can determine whether or not it needs a public hearing, it's not necessarily site plan approval that requires a public hearing, but at least some kind of stipulation in there that they need approval by the board.
It absolutely should, if I was, if I was a neighbor and I saw, you know, a car dealership sign go up, even if, even if it's two-by-two, and I live on this, you know, in this particular road, I'm, I'm gonna have a problem with that. So I think that should be, that should absolutely trigger a public, in my personal opinion.
I think that's something we'll work on for the fall town meeting to, to make a change, yes.
If I may, Norm, if I may, if, just to maybe help the board feel a little bit more comfortable, Ty and I also had a conversation, and he is going to have to apply for an auto dealer license with the select board, which does require a public hearing, so the abutters are gonna be notified, just under a different board, and then there will be conditions on the license itself that, you know, no vehicles will be allowed to be sold on the property, um, we have a similar, I was telling him, a similar, similar dealer in town where he does only online, um, there's nothing that takes place here in town, so it would be similar to that, so...
Okay, excellent.
The abutters will still know.
Awesome, that's, that was all, my only concern, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, would it be reasonable for us to make a motion that we have no objection to the proposal?
That would be fine, just to put it on the record, yeah, I think that would be good to have it in the minutes.
Like to make a motion that there is no objection to the information as presented for 124 Maple Minor Home Occupancy, Minor Home Occupation.
Second that. Is there any discussion? Anybody out there, either? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're all set, Ty?
That's all there is to it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
If anything does come up that I need to adhere to, more than willing, my number, I believe John has, I guess I don't need that.
Yeah, so if you grow for some reason, just come in and see us, and we'll discuss that.
Of course, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, the zone, yeah, Rose Resuming a Parcel's Discussion, the board's role in this process. This, uh, this is in the way of a preference. This has come up as, I think, a result of, I think it's Mr. Elbag.
Yeah, I mean, like, I could speak to it.
Oh, yeah, we might.
Just hold on a minute, is, uh, looking for a zoning change, uh, on Maple Ave, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, anyway, um, John and I talked about this thing, and felt that, not specific to this particular proposal, well, in general, or I can't say as a policy necessarily, but as a, I don't know how else to describe it, uh, what should be our stance for individual zoning changes? That are not proposed by, let's say, the planning board, or, I don't know, maybe it could be the board of health, for all I know.
Right, that are basically citizens petition articles.
Yeah, they're basically citizens petitions.
For like one lot?
It could be an individual lot or a couple lots, now, um... It could be an individual lot or a couple lots now, um, when s- when s- when someone comes in with a citizen's petition.
Because of this.
When someone comes in with a citizen's petition, naturally, the planning board and the select board, you know, if they get the proper number of signatures, it it, nothing can prevent them from getting on the town meeting warrant. They're allowed legally to go forward with that. However, um, I have seen instances where it's not a rezoning of a parcel, but um, a citizen petition article has come in and the planning board has taken a stance on it because naturally, a public hearing will need to be held in that instance, per mass general law, and the planning board would have one of three options to either vote favorable action on it, unfavorable action on it, or basically not take a position on it. Um, to basically, you know, not vote any action on it. Um, the the instance that I remember in Rentham, um, they had just about a year and a half prior approved the bylaw with all sorts of regulations for drive-through facilities in terms of minimum queue distance, the, you know, the length of the drive-through lane and all sorts, new minimum uh acreage for a lot for a drive-through. And um, a a private developer came in with a citizen's petition to basically cut all those regulations in half a year and a half later and came before the planning board and the planning board did take a, take a stance against it because they said, no, we passed this for a reason. We feel like, you know, a year and a half after passing these regulations, it would be inappropriate to reduce them significantly like this. So I have seen a planning board taking action um on a citizen petition article if they feel it's in the best interest of the town. But that would be, that would be, that would be a board decision, uh, from my experience.
Well, like I, I had made a red marks in here on agriculture, recreation and open space uses because it doesn't look like the town, um, the right to farm. That was the whole town. It was voted on and it really nullifies it in a lot of places.
Well, are we talking about the use table now? This is, this is not a discussion on the use table, Dick. This is a discussion about rezoning of a parcel.
Of a parcel.
Of a parcel, an individual parcel.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, I I I'm looking at from a little bit different perspective than what John John was saying. Uh, my kinda question is if someone comes with a proposal, is it reasonable for the planning board, so I guess I'm, for lack of a better word, say, take charge so that that person doesn't need to do a citizen's petition? Should we or shouldn't we, ever?
Never say never.
Essentially ask for an agenda item on it or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, um, I don't, I don't think that the citizen's petition would be required to be subject to a public hearing at the planning board level.
Yeah.
If it goes straight to town meeting or um, town warrant.
I believe the planning board is required to hold a public hearing on all zoning map and zoning bylaw amendments.
Okay, regardless whether or not the petition is fully executed.
Doesn't matter who the sponsor is. I mean, I could sp- I could bring forward an article to the planning board. The board of health could bring forward an article, the building commissioner could bring forward.
Understood, understood. So if they, if they have, so to speak, checked all of the boxes for getting on a town warrant, we can only recommend whether or not it's good or bad.
Yep.
Or or no action.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Or we can make no recommendation.
Right. Now, now to Norm's point, Norm brings up a good.
Right, no, no, I let's, yeah, right, we're here to make a decision.
Norm, Norm brings up a good point because in my professional opinion, the board absolut-
God.
Oh, god. Uh, so, so anyway, the 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 board, the board.
Make a phone call.
The bo- the board absolutely, the board absolutely has the right. All right, is everyone focused? Uh, so anyway, so um,
Try to get rid of that.
So the board absolutely has the right, if it de- if it's, if it's appropriate, to uh, to offer to sponsor an article. If they believe the rezoning is in the best interest of the town, they could, the planning board can absolutely um, agree to sponsor an article like that.
Meaning watching you uh, joyriding with your cigar.
Don't go, come on.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll let him know then. See ya.
So I I think.
He actually wants to ask a question.
So.
So he's actually trying to uh participate.
So I think that would be a board decision. The board could take a vote if someone wanted to, say, say Dick or Norm or Keith thought it, thought, you know, hey, I make a motion that the planning board sponsor this article. The planning board could agree to sponsor the article, but you don't have to.
Yeah, and the other thing, I'm I'm just putting that out as a, as a question.
I mean, it would still, it would still go out for a vote no matter what.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, whatever.
Oh, yeah, the board would still vote favorable, unfavorable action.
On the bottom, it's gonna say.
Sponsor planning board, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, and. You know, there's a couple instances where I'm looking at this year, uh, where one is maybe an extension of his own and another is for lack of a better term, maybe a map correction. And um, rather than go through the citizen's petition process, I was wondering if I brought it before the board, it would be something that the board would endorse because, you know, frankly, if the board didn't endorse it, I don't know that I would even take it to town meeting. Because I would want the support of the board at the town meeting. So that's why, rather than going through the citizen's petition process, I'm here tonight just to ask if it is a process that the, that the board would consider.
Obviously, we're not here. We don't have the information to make a decision. I think he's just asking if the board would ent-
Yeah, no specific, just in general.
Would be willing to entertain that possibility.
Generalities.
I, I'd have to say it would have to be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think as long as you're, you're open to that, I would, I would come before the board. Obviously, I'm running out of time before the, the May town meeting here.
Now, we do have a meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
So if you could get some information together, we certainly could put you on the agenda in two weeks because I think we're planning on holding public hearings on zoning bylaw amendments on April ninth.
So if you, if folks are generally okay with that, I'll, I'll pull the stuff together for the, the meeting in two weeks. I just don't wanna.
Oh, the, I, I hold on, the only thing I worry about is I would need to get a legal ad in the paper and we wouldn't have time to get a legal ad in the paper.
Is it, is it ten day or is it?
No, 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 it would be seven and fourteen. We need to get in each of the success of two weeks, so.
Weeks.
Basically, yeah, so I don't think we could make this spring town meeting, but you could still come forward. Um, and ask, ask the board, yeah, we, so if you wanted to make it on for this town meeting, I think citizen petition would be your, your only alternative for this town meeting. Cause of the timing.
Last meeting that you can.
April ninth, yes, cause I'm, I'm on vacation the second half of April. So we're doing it on April ninth.
In the back of my mind with Cleo up there, I'm thinking it's Sims.
And the oth- and the other reason is, Mark, I always like to have the public hearings, two meetings before town meeting, that way, if for some reason there's a continuation um, to the next meeting, the board has time to deal with that. Rather than having it the last meeting before town meeting, if something comes up, say, say there's, say there's a mistake with the legal advertisement for some reason, we have time to, we have time to adjust and correct it before town meeting.
Uh, Dick was asking what property we, uh, Mark is talking about. Can we at least mention?
Yeah, if if Mark feels comfortable mentioning the property.
Yeah, so I'm looking at one eighty-seven Maple Ave. And if, if, maybe we don't need a formal hearing, but if I do, do go through the citizen's position petition, maybe it would be ni- nice to know if the board would favor it, but it's one eighty-seven Maple Ave. It's um, the old Basset property, just, just past Countryside Estates on the right. So everything there is zoned town center two.
On the right?
Well.
Going out of town on the right.
Well, well, hold on a sec, Mark. I checked it out. That's not completely true. The town center district ends at Countryside Estates.
I was gonna finish.
And then it's, then it's business and then the property's.
Everything's town center two, and then there's two parcels in there that are business, and then this parcel directly abuts that. So we'd be looking at, I think the business district is really just a remnant of what was in the old zoning. And we were looking to go to town center two because I think that's a newer iteration of all the zoning in town and most of the town is that town center one or town center two.
Okay, that business district is countryside, isn't it?
I believe the countryside and the parcel before it, Bobo's Garage.
With the garage, you know?
Yeah.
Grania.
Yeah. So it, yeah, so it's basically town center two all the way down those couple of commercial parcels. There's no residential at all. And it would extend that zoning, either commercial or town center two, but I thought town center two made more sense just because of, that's kind of the way the town is going with all the zoning. You know, we're, we're not really making commercial districts, we're making that town center district. You know, that's, if you look at the map, that was the intent of the two thousand and ten changes.
So it's the house that just got torn down?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're saying it's gonna be, I guess, what's, what's the need to change? It's the benefit to the property?
I think it benefits the town. It opens it up for more of a tax revenue for the town. It's on a busy street. It's next to Countryside Estates.
It's not buried in a bunch of houses too?
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not buried in a residential area.
Do you have any ideas what you're doing or just wanna get the land ready for?
No, I think we're open to, we're kinda open to anything. Um, you know, as it sits now, it's a single family zone for s- one single family house. If we get it to town center two, we could incorporate some business. Uh, you know, with expanding the tax base and just kind of an ex- an extension of that, of that zone.
Now, just to make you aware, Mark, um, the zoning in that, because we just um, dealt with another property that was asking about this lantern lane um, with a duplex, just to make people aware, not only is there a minimum front yard setback, but there's a maximum front yard setback. So you can't be more than twenty feet from the road there. So whatever you do, um, it can't be set too far, set back too far.
No.
Uh, Norm, if I may, just a bit of helpful information from Mark. So it's not set in stone, but this Monday, the select board's gonna vote on um, opening and closing the warrant. And the proposed date is to open it on Monday, the eighteenth, and close it on April first. A citizen's petition for annual town meeting only needs ten signatures. So if you decided you wanted to take a chance, do it, get it, and then you'll have that ready for the warrant, so then they can still go through their process afterwards with a public hearing. That, that's an option.
Yeah, so I'll, I have, yeah, either way, I'll do the citizen's petition.
Because if you do that, Mark, I can put a legal ad together.
Yeah.
For your public hearing on the ninth. Because I'm gonna need to get that in about three weeks in advance because to get it in for the two successive weeks, we have to get the ad in the Thursday the week before.
Alright, so I'll get that petition in for Monday night. That's easy enough. Yeah. And then whenever, you know, if the board wants to take it up, I'm happy to attend a hearing or?
And the, and certainly, I I see, I see you guys doing a lot of thinking on this.
Yeah.
You don't have to make any determination tonight. Um, I think we've kind of mapped out the route.
Yeah, it's really hard without a plan and, so, sorry.
I don't think we can give any kind of guarantees or.
No, no, I'm not looking for a guarantee.
That kind of.
No, but I I'm, I'm enthralled that you are thinking that way and, and the town needs it.
Am I cor- I mean, you don't have to answer me, but my big question is, you know, am I correct in thinking that town center two is the right way to go or is there more, and, you know, if you wanna think about this, is there more appetite to approve commercial versus town center two? Because both of those zoning districts are right there to avoid spot zoning.
I, I mean, what kind of commercial? Because you have, you have the business, you have light o- industrial office and even though it's not desk wrench- residential down there, one thing I would guard against is commercial creep. Going, cause it does get residential down there, even though it's, even though it's a busy road.
And John, I, I'd actually prefer town center two. And I, I view the commercials and industrial as more of spot zoning than town center two.
And I, I would, I would agree with you on that.
Okay, as long as folks.
Yeah, no, I'd agree with you on that.
Yeah. It's not there anymore.
Yeah, I, I think the other, beyond town center two, the other, the other zoning districts are probably a little bit too intense area, in in my opinion.
And frankly, they're just spot zoning leftover from the historic uses of the parcels.
Now, now, bylaws subcommittee's gonna be working on some of that to see if we can make it a little bit better.
So, something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate the time.
So, Mark, get the, get the, get the signatures. You only need ten.
Yeah, easy enough.
And that way, it's a placeholder.
Yep.
And um, you know, if the planning board, you know, we can put on the agenda for the twenty-sixth and I can get the legal ad in for the ninth, and if the planning board decides to sponsor it, it's an ea- it's an easy change. All it is, is administrative thing on the warrant, so.
Okay.
It doesn't change your process at all.
Very good. Well, thank you.
And so before next meeting, so uh, before next, by next Wednesday, if you could get me any materials you want to submit to the board for them to look at for this.
Yeah, is there any, I mean.
You could, you could.
I, I have plenty of G I S mapping and stuff like that. I don't know if there's anything that you're particularly looking for?
I think just the existing zoning, going down that area to see, to, so you can have visual.
And proposed, yeah.
What's that?
And proposed.
Yeah.
What, do what it would look like, that's all I.
Alright.
Yeah, simple stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I cut in now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Real quick, that uh covenant, I have to record that as well, so I just wanted to, I forgot it, so.
Tamika has to notarize that, Cleo.
Tamika, yeah, she notarized it, I thought.
No, 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 she's doing it tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I didn't know uh, that you needed a notary, so I don't have my stamp with me.
Oh, okay. Alright, so I'll grab that when I grab the other thing then.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to bother you.
Thanks, Cleo.
Thanks for the pitcher. How's the cigar?
If you like that, six, hey, I got some, a whole box of those in the car. I'll give you guys one if you want.
I don't think we can legally.
Bye, Al.
Bye.
Bye.
Thought you had a zoning question, I would've let him cut it earlier.
So, so I think we're all set with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Funny, when I first joined the planning board, we used to smoke at the meetings.
Holy shit.
Yeah. Good old days. About thirty-three years ago.
Something like that.
Maybe thirty-four years ago, something, yeah. It's great. Oh, my word.
Yeah. Okay, uh, active subdivisions, uh, we heard a little bit about Great Hall and, and Rice and Hilltop, so. I guess I kinda take care of that. Number seven, correspondence. Nobody wants to talk to us, I guess. And that kinda brings us to the town planner report.
So the only thing I wanna mention is, um, you know, obviously, one of the public hearings we're gonna have on the ninth will be for the um, for the draft, use and dimensional tables, and I, I can see, this is one of the great things about sitting up here is when Dick was speaking before, I, I could see that you have yours all marked up. The only changes I'm look, the only review I'm looking for at this point is for accuracy. I understand that Dick and I had a conversation this morning and the next step coming out of this is, my only intention of this is to get what's in text into tabular form for an easier, user-friendly reference for people to be able to put their fingers on what the maximum building height is in a zoning district, or hey, what can I do with my property? And have a column with the zoning district and go to the corresponding road if, to look at the uses to see what's allowed and what's not allowed and how it's allowed. In terms of changing the table and changing subsequent things to the bylaws, that's something that I anticipate that will come out of this. So, um, so changes to the table or changes in terms of what's allowed where, that's gonna be a discussion for a future date. The only thing I wanna accomplish now is to just get something in tabular form that reflects the current zoning, as imperfect as it may be. And then we could talk about making changes, uh, coming out of town meeting with the bylaws subcommittee. So that's, that's my only intention, so, um, you know, and you and I spoke about that this morning, Dick, so that's, that's all I wanna say about that.
Why, when I saw it, going through it, I says, you know, I'd, I'd like to have like Randy Jordan's economic development thoughts about it. Do you think that's right the way it's laid out? Maybe because of the way it's laid out, people are coming in to build, or should it be something different?
And I, I think, you know, this, it's worth us studying this.
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't set a precedent. This is just taking the bylaw and putting it in tabular form.
Correct.
So there's no, if someone's gonna decide whether or not they wanna proceed with a project, this is actually, and I use these religiously. So I'm a little bit biased when it comes to these. These are a great way to say, nope, I can't put a two-family there. Super easy. I don't waste anybody's time. I'm not going before, I'm not submitting plans to the building department, cause I misread a, misread a, you know, a certain paragraph of a bylaw.
Yeah.
Um, and it also, one of the things these, these will do is they do find errors sometimes in the bylaw where they find out, oh, wait a minute, we have a multi-use in a zoning that we thought we had one use for. So I, I'm, I'm a fan of them. They need to be scrubbed. They have to be accurate because you can't have a tabular form like this that contradicts a bylaw.
Right.
Because if they're both set in stone, then you have a, you know, you have a potential for a dismissal on a decision. And we don't, we don't wanna get down that road, so they have to be accurate.
Please take a look at this over the next, you know, few weeks, and for accuracy only at this point, just for accuracy. In terms of changing material things in the table, like I spoke with, with Dick this morning. In terms of changing material things in the table, like I spoke with with Dick this morning, absolutely, that's gonna be on the, that's gonna be on the table going forward because. Like, to your point, Britton, I noticed things that, you know, groups of uses that are grouped together that I'm not sure are appropriate to be grouped together, like banks and gasoline stations. Things like that, or there are some uses that we don't have anymore, like telephone exchanges, things like that that are.
Where they contradict each other.
They contradict each other, so.
Those are the, those are the bad ones, those are the one we gotta get rid of.
So I know it's a tough thing to do, but I what I'm asking for is just to get these tables in place, like I said, they're not perfect, but our bylaws need some fixing. So I know what we're what we're putting in place is not perfect, they're gonna have some errors, but right now, that's that's okay. I just want my my goal right now is to get this in place to make it a little bit more user friendly, then we can discuss. Making changes that are appropriate to the table, and it's gonna mean maybe making changes to the text or. Hopefully, maybe even reducing the text a little bit, so there won't be so much text, so. But those are discussions we can have at a at a future date, but I wanna at least get the tables in place, and like I said, please look at them for accuracy only at this point.
Yeah, yeah, well, the thing is, it's kind of one of these things where. It's not necessarily all that easy to spot these things from the text of the bylaws.
Right.
Uh and and it's one of these things, and I'm just gonna pick out one because I can I can foresee whole bunches of changes. The second item, minor home occupation on page one, is not allowed in the VC district.
Yeah, cuz that's what our bylaw says. That's the answer, not the right one, but.
The bylaw says that home occupations are allowed in the R forty and R sixty districts, that's it.
So and my request would be, don't shoot the messenger.
No, we absolutely shoot.
You know, and and God knows how many more.
So these are a good way to, you know, like I said, cross check your bylaws, cuz.
No, I am curious. The top heading.
Yes.
That's highlighted.
Yes.
You have VC two.
Village Center, VC, uh Village Center two.
Oh, is that, do I accidentally have a footnote?
The superscript two.
Superscript two, let me take a look at that.
Yeah, just just.
Oh, no, um that is, those are footnotes, Norm. Those are footnotes that refer to the bottom of the table that have certain stipulations. So VC number two, what that refers to is for that district. Any non-residential use must be less than five thousand square feet, blah, 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 for structures grade. So those are footnotes that refer to something at the end of the table that are specific to that district or that use. That I think are important to for people to know.
Norm, can I ask a question? I've been dying to know, what's a telephone exchange?
That's the building that's uh almost across from the post office up in.
Right beside Tom Richarlison.
Is that where they like legit used to do like the?
Yeah.
Major cables feed in.
That's where the two volt batteries used to be in the power and the power, you know, for the line.
So but they didn't have like.
The ladies that like. Oh, that's cool. I asked John, and I said, do you know what it is? He goes, I don't know what it is, I knew you guys.
Probably not needed in the bylaw.
That woman there could tell you, oh, by the way, if you're looking for your grandmother, she went out.
That's a da- that's a dangerous person.
The woman was fantastic.
Boy, talk about secrets.
Talk about knowing everything about everybody everywhere.
And and the and the. As a little kid, I had to remember that was the first thing that was thought.
And and by the way, Rutland is not unique when it comes to having antiquated uses in the bylaws. I think I think the town of Blackstone still has ice warehouses.
Like a saloon, you know, like a saloon in our bylaw or something. We do, you know.
So that that happens, I mean, like I said, even when a bylaws. Britton and I were talking about this, even when a bylaws written, it could be the world's most perfect bylaw. Over time, it's gonna become outdated naturally, it happens, so um so yeah, this this will hopefully. Be a tool to help um update the zoning bylaws and make some changes.
Um just a question, like each one of these, any pick anyone, you know, it's like a jeopardy board. They're all referencing a specific page that that you read.
Correct, and our from the zoning bylaw.
Is there a way to, I know it'll clutter it up, and I know if we add bylaws, it changes the page location. But is there a way to reference what page?
Yeah, again, again, I don't like. Yeah, cuz pages can change. So I'd rather just stick to the article and section because say we add a paragraph. To a certain page of the bylaw, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but yeah, it's not so much cluttering up, it's just. I I don't wanna have to go back and amend the bylaws constantly.
You know, for me, for accuracy, I mean, I'd have to take, that obviously, it it would take hours anyway, but. These are hundreds, if not at least five hundred different points. You know, you know about some of them right away, maybe, whether they're accurate or not, I guess.
Well, and that's why at the top, Keith, I mean, Tim Tim made a good suggestion at last meeting of putting that um heading at the top. And, you know, to put the articles' numbers next to each of these uses where people can actually go and look at what's allowed, so. I thought that was a really good idea cuz that makes it, that makes it easier.
So these things are not simple, like there's there's multiple echelons of a lot of people that have to look through it. And I I mean, obviously, we're we're driving the bus, but. There's a lot of items to go through and some have may may have differing opinions on what the bylaw says versus what we're gonna put in the tabular. But that's where we have to figure out.
And listen.
Is it an issue with the wording in the bylaw?
And so if if or is it, if if the board, if you guys look at this and decide that this needs a little bit more. Looking at, it doesn't have to, I I would like it to go in the May in the Maytown meeting, but it doesn't have to. It like to Britton's point, if you need to take this, uh take a more of a fine tooth comb to this, we can absolutely do that, just let me know, okay?
Tend to think that Maytown meeting would be rushing it a little bit.
So do you want me to to, so no Maytown meeting, we'll take a look at this over the summer and get it ready for the for fall town meeting?
Would would this be something that we would consider reviewing in the bylaw subcommittee? Because you're you're you are referencing a lot of that here.
If there are changes to be made to the bylaws, I gotta say yes, however.
I I I don't, I don't wanna straddle the line to, cuz I know I know Dick has a lot of comments, I. I I just wanna focus on accuracy right now. Cross referencing and get this in the bylaws, and then we could talk about changes.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't know if 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 we end up with a slow period of time. If as a planning board, we could take time to talk about making some changes to the bylaws. Technically, you should go to the subcommittee.
Yeah, okay.
But what the heck, what is the subcommittee?
Right here. I just didn't know if.
So we can we can pose dual.
So you know what, so what we'll do is for the Maytown meeting, we have a few corrections that Anita has from when they updated the bylaws, and we have the uh the rezoning of. That property, vice is the petition of the planning board, so so we can hold off on this for now and 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 aim for the fall if you feel that's better, Norm.
I I kinda think so.
Okay. No problem with that.
I got one more question, um obviously, you want this in the zoning bylaw, what stops you from just saying, or not? Not as a suggestion to you, but couldn't you just put this on the website and say, here's this, you can't do stuff like that?
I I really don't like to do that, um these are part of zoning bylaws in other communities, so I'd like to do it the right way.
Okay.
And.
Just curious.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying, um I I don't like to do that because I don't like to just, I I don't wanna haphazardly, well, not haphazardly, but just. Put something unilaterally up on the website like this, I mean, putting the meeting schedule up for different deadlines is administrative thing. This is, this is more than administrative and especially with how com- how complex the bylaws are in terms of the text. I wanna make sure it gets a thorough review to make sure it's accurate to Britton's point because. You don't wanna risk a challenge to a decision because of a typo or an oversight.
Exactly, and that's all it takes. How many hours did you, weeks, days?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, it was it was it was over, uh it was over probably, um you know, a four or five day period, I kind of, you know, just put. Put the ti- put the spreadsheet together and just, and I I've looked at it a few different times, I've I've crossed, I've gone through it a couple different times, so. Um but again, it's always good to have different eyes looking at it because I've been in situations, my first job in Brockton where um. We we had a letter put together in the planning department and the the city planner looked at it, I looked at it as a staff planner. And our secretary looked at it, and it's and it's still had, it's still had a typo in it. So um the more eyes that can look at it, the the better off it is, I believe, in this instance.
Sometimes I I feel our village centered district. You know, a lot of these things that says no in here, and yet I feel that it should.
It could be.
It should be, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, for now, we're looking at the accuracy.
Yes, please.
Does this match?
Exactly.
It's in the text of the. That's all we're looking for.
Go back. Should we sort of have a um an agreed upon? Not really, yeah, like a timeline, so that everybody can say, alright, I know I've gotta review this, so just I just. Wouldn't wanna see the can kicked where it's, I know we got town meeting coming up and we've got a couple things on our plate in the immediate future, but I'm thinking like.
What's a good second meeting in April, how's that?
I'm not gonna be here, but you guys can discuss it. So so here's what I figure, do you wanna put it on for the agenda in two weeks? We don't have a lot on the agenda in two weeks, do you want, do you think that'll be enough time to take a look at this? I knew, oh, you're not gonna be here for the next meeting.
Yeah, so I was gonna bring that up in the other.
So how about if we do this, April ninth, the public hearings we have are not gonna be big public hearings, it's gonna be a few corrections and the potential rezoning of the property. What if we put on the agenda for April ninth to discuss this? That'll give us about a month? Is that enough time for you guys to look at it, Britton?
With me being gone, I would.
Gonna be.
If not, since we're looking.
I read pretty slow.
We could, we could put it on the agenda for the first meeting in May. When I'm back from vacation, Britton, you're back.
For me, that's better because I don't, I mean, you take a week off, you pay for it for two weeks, so.
And it'll give me a chance to take another look at it and just make sure, so, alright, why don't we put it out, what's the first meeting in May, Tamika, do you see? Alright, so how do we scroll down? So it would be um May fourteenth.
Yes, it would.
Town meetings on May eleventh, Saturday, so yes, so May fourteenth would be um the first meeting in May to discuss this.
Just an FYI, that'll also be your first meeting as a new board, cuz the elections may thirteen.
Oh, so we have to put a reorganization on.
So.
There's a possibility.
There's a possibility that somebody could spend their time reviewing it and then not be able to.
Well, the notes could be. Splied and.
Instead of sitting here, sit there.
Yeah, that that would be, that would be fine, yeah, absolutely.
Set up there, there's nothing against it.
We gotta gavel.
I'm in.
Don't give Dick a gavel if that's the case.
So, anything else from town planner report?
No, that's it, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Number nine, other, anybody have any others?
I just wanted to say I won't be here for um our last meeting in uh this month, so.
He'll be in a much better place. Where will you be, Britton?
I'll be in Argentina.
That's a better place. Business or pleasure?
Uh, pleasure, I'm going after my trophy stag, I've been hunting for years, so. We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens.
The only other thing I can think of, and it keeps bothering me, wasn't it last August? We're gonna be invited into the Sims place to do it, what happened?
I I think they're behind schedule.
They are behind schedule.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. So we had a special, we signed a special permit on that. Correct, that two years.
Well, they backed it on it.
Pardon?
They backed it on it, they're just behind schedule.
Yes, yeah.
Is that one of the marijuana? That's the one on the left as you go out towards holding the freestanding building? It's another one on the right, okay.
The old Sims cab company. Well, just thought, I have not heard a peep out of anybody.
Well, the chief, the chief was in, the fire chief was in a couple weeks ago, and he was saying that, yeah, there's.
Yeah, they're working right now on the generator and the fire suppression system, there were some concerns there, so they're trying to button those things up. But yeah, there's no projected open date yet.
So they are working on it.
They are, yep.
Well, I wish Cleo was still on here because I would uh ask him whatever happened to KP. That was supposed to open up there, I never did, KP Restaurant.
Okay, well, I'll see, I don't tend any other or any public comment from anybody, I don't see any public anywhere.
Well, the public was very polite tonight.
Yes. Except for the smoking cigar.
That was cool.
With that, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.
You guys made good.